Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. This is November 19th of 2020. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. Just want to take a quick attendance here. Howard Burgess is here. Norm Cohen.
Here.
Jim Hall.
Here.
Sherman Hunter.
Here.
Andy McVane.
Here.
Dana Peterson.
Here.
Good, Mary Beth Polley.
Yes.
Jerry Sterns.
Here.
And myself. Okay, great. Let's jump into the public hearing for tonight for the Benetatto subdivision. We have Ray Page here, and this is subdivision number 309. I believe it's still three parcels we're talking about, Ray. And anything else that has changed since we met with you three weeks ago?
No, not really. I just, I've met with you, I guess, three different times now. I may have to join the board. I don't know if I can do that, living out of town. I'm teasing, I'm teasing. No, so there's the same thing, three lot subdivision. Nothing being proposed to be built at this time. One house, or excuse me, one lot would have a house on it that's pre-existing. Two lots would be vacant, again, with nothing proposed. And we do have a state permit, so other than that, I'd say nothing has changed.
Okay, and your initial fee of $300 has been paid. We gave you preliminary approval last time. We saw a early plat. And is there anyone from the neighborhood, anyone, or anyone from the public who has any questions or comments about the subdivision? Any questions for Ray Page from the commission?
Barb from Howard. I just, just one question for Ray. Are the two lots, the two vacant lots, are they buildable lots, ready to go with all the approvals?
No, those, the two lots were essentially, the state considers them exempted lots, so they're raw land. So any development that may happen on there in the future, they would have to go get a state permit in order to do that. I think, I know Howard, I think Mark had spoken with you. I don't know, I guess Mr. Shomo may be interested in buying one just for protection, or I'm not sure, but I know Mark has no plans to build anything, and they're basically undeveloped drop parcels.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Any, do you, Ray, have any questions above? We should be able to vote on this tonight. I'll close the hearing and then open it up for a motion. There'll be another, I guess, a final of $25, if I'm not mistaken. And then the final plat within 90 days.
That's correct. If it's approved, there's a $25 filing fee payable to the town clerk's office, and it would be due by February 17th.
The plat as well?
Yeah, the plat, the plat, the filing fees due when you bring in the plat, but the plat, the 90 days is, if you approve it tonight, is February 17th is the last day.
Okay, great, thanks, Bill.
I think from, from my perspective, that, that all makes sense. You did cut out a little bit, at least when you were speaking, Barbara. So you said that you would, would I know about this tonight? You would open it up for discussion and then vote on it? Is that what you said, or?
Yeah, yeah, I think what we'll do is we'll close the hearing, the public hearing per se, and, but, but don't go anywhere. Right after I close it, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Okay, that sounds good. I just, that sounds great, I just didn't hear. Sounds good.
Okay, okay. All right. Jim, did you have something?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, Norm?
Nope.
Okay, okay, so let's close the hearing for the subdivision. And I will entertain a motion to approve this, or whatever the commission would like to do at this point.
Motion to approve the Benetatto subdivision for, on Post Road and Post Road Extension
Second was, okay, the motion was made by Dana, seconded by Sherman. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. February 17th, Ray.
Sounds good. Thank you all very much, and I'll be pestering Bill, so we'll get that taken care of.
And come back and join us anytime.
I'll be here frequently, all week. Thank you so much, guys, take care now.
Okay, you take care too.
All right.
Okay, next on the agenda is approving the agenda. A little out of place tonight because of the hearing.
So moved.
Thank you, Dana.
Second.
Okay, Andy, seconded that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Any other public here, other than what, other than the people here to hear and discuss the Thomas Dairy parcel? Any other public? Okay, hearing none. Scott, Dylan is here. I'm glad you joined us a little bit early, because things are moving right along here. Welcome, Scott. He is from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation, and there you are. Want to try speaking a little, just another sentence or two, Scott?
Sure.
Okay, there you go. There we go.
Yeah, I didn't hear that, yeah.
Excellent. So, yeah, we asked you here because we've had a couple of development projects proposed for the parcel. And the most recent one cited the archaeological or historical significant site there as a reason for pulling out, and that was, that was their excuse. So we're, we're wondering now, what exactly is there and what we can do with, and what, how we can help the landowner and how we can keep this in commercial designation for the town for future development? So, yeah, go.
I can give you a little bit of history about this. So originally, that overall parcel was considered and ultimately chosen for the Army Reserve Center. And as part of that project and the process, the National Guard actually did an archaeological survey for three alternatives, two of which were on the Thomas property, including the one that was ultimately chosen, and one was off-site down in North Clarendon. I think it was called Alternative 3, where, I can't remember, auto dealer went in there, the Kia dealer, the most recent Kia dealer, I believe, was built on that parcel a couple of years ago. And, but that had been surveyed at that time. So once the Army Reserve chose the Thomas parcel to build its facility, there was a four-lot subdivision that the Thomases entered into under Act 250, under land use permit, 1R, gosh, I think it's 0698, I believe. And that four-lot subdivision included, they called them tracks, I believe, in the subdivision. Two of the tracks, Track 2 and Track 3, were ultimately purchased by the National Guard where the facility was built. And then the remaining two tracks, Track 1, which is the one that fronts at least a little bit on Route 7.
Scott, Scott, I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt you. Someone just joined us, and I'm wondering if we need to back up a little bit. Who, who just called in by iPhone?
Richard Thomas.
Thank you. Hi, hi, Dick. So Scott, could you back up just a little bit?
So, yeah, Richard or Dick, I'm talking about the four-lot subdivision that was entered into in, in Act 250 in 2009, which ultimately broke off two tracks or lots to the Army National Guard where the facility is now built. And anyway, so, can I pick up there? As part of, as part of all that work, I believe, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 archaeological sites were identified on the property. And these are Native American sites, actually, four Native American sites and one historic site, which was the former Adams Farmhouse, which is on Track 1. It's, it's been taken down. In fact, the Thomases took that down, I believe, in the 70s, when the life lease of the last Adams was, was ended. So that was a historic site, there were remaining foundations. Of the two prehistoric sites, or contact sites on Track 1, along with the historic site, most of the site area was determined not to be significant, and it's not protected by anything. But one area on that lot, we call it Locust 4, which is in the southwest of that Lot 1 parcel, is significant, eligible for the National Register for Historic Places and automatically the State Register of Historic Places. And that was protected by the conditions in the land use permit. Once again, 1Rs 698, 0698. The other sites that were located on the Army Guard, ultimately what became the Army Guard parcel, Army Reserve Center, those areas were also determined not to be significant, so there were no restrictions on either of those two lots. And then there's the fourth lot, which is in the eastern portion. I think that's the largest lot. One site was identified there, and in that same Act 250 permit, that lot is also conditioned as archaeologically sensitive and would need additional review should it be developed. So that's pretty much the summation of it. My understanding from talking to the Thomases real estate agents, agent, I don't remember his name, with regard to Lot 1, they were interested in figuring out exactly where the buffer was. And it's, it is a relatively small buffer in the southwest corner of the property or that lot. And as I told him at the time, it had many solar projects in Vermont who have been able to cite a project while working around a buffer of that size.
What, what size are we talking about, Scott?
I don't have the exact figure. It's certainly less than, I mean, I would say it's less than a quarter acre or so. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I would say it's less than a quarter acre. Thank you. I mean, I could potentially, I don't know if I can, I think I can share screen, maybe? If you'd like, I could probably try to show you a plot map. It's all in Act 250. I would assume that the Thomases have a copy of that plat map. It's shown on that.
Yeah, we have one.
Yeah, so then you know where the buffer is.
Yeah, it's not.
I'd love to see it, if you can show it, Scott, by showing, sharing your screen.
I'll try to do that. I have to get permission, though. Somebody has to give me permission, because it's disabled right now.
I'll be built.
Give it a try now.
Okay, let's see what I can do here. Can you see that?
Not yet.
No. It should be pretty immediate. Let me try again. Yeah, it's actually not showing up. Oh, I see what it's doing. Here, I can do it this way. Make sure I'm in the right place here. Here we go. How about that?
Yep.
Coming.
Okay. There it is. So it's a circular, H-shaped area in the southwest corner of that lot.
Okay, okay, and what, since it is significant, what, what, if anything, is allowed there?
Well, basically, no ground disturbance is allowed in there without doing additional work. You could potentially do some additional work, but usually that becomes more expensive than actually trying to work around it. As you folks may know, in, I believe, maybe 2016, Key Collision proposed citing a collision center here and got through most of the permitting process and then withdrew for some reason. But they worked around this location. They had cited the, the overall facility without impacting this buffer.
With something like a solar array there, or, or any other business, would it need to be fenced off or, or separated?
Well, there's various things we could do. I mean, solar arrays, in particular, have, I'd say, a wider suite of options, because generally, it's not full-scale, full-scale disturbance of the landform. Basically, the only kinds of impacts, depending whether there's grading involved or whatever, I understand this is a fairly, I mean, I've been there, it's a very somewhat humky or rolling, rolling site, but if, if they didn't want, if they didn't do any grading in that area, it wouldn't be that difficult to mitigate the impacts that would result from, say, racks of, of, or support racks for their, essentially, those are separated by sometimes as much as 10-foot spacing on rack support posts. And there's ways to anchor those to the ground that, ground disturbance. So something like that could happen, provided that any kind of electrical line that would connect the energy generated are in the rack support system itself rather than underground, which is also a common thing that happens. So I would say a solar sighting would be one of the easier things to work within this buffer. You know, there would be some conditions associated with it. We do it all the time in Public Utility Commission undertaking solar projects.
Question for you, Scott. What are all those black lines that are scattered here and there around the map? What do they represent?
So those were actually mechanical trenches excavated as part of the archaeological review.
Okay.
Looking for features associated with the one site that was there. It's a very large site, and it's quite old. It's 1,000 years, or 8,000 years old. So part of that was mitigation to look for other significant areas. But by the time the, what we call the Phase 2 site evaluation was done, the only area that was considered significant was Locust 4. And, and that does date to between 6,500 and, and 8,000 years ago.
Okay, thank you.
How did you, this is Norman Cohen. How is that determined? How's the age determined? The age. It was direct carbon dating of material that was taken from a feature, a pit feature, where carbonized plant material was deposited at that time. So it's direct dated in this case. It's also supported by the type of tools that were recovered. Essentially, just as some people drive Chevys today, or Fords, or Tundras, humans have always been the same and have stylistic things that they hang on to. So in certain time periods, the kind of arrowheads or projectile points, really, because they're mostly spear points that were made, have a certain style. And so when you recover those, that style or that shape of projectile point, sites that you can date, when you find them in other places where you can't date them, you can infer that they're contemporaneous. And that works, you know, that works all over New England or all over North America, essentially, where those stylistic differences maintained for certain time periods. In this case, we were able to not only have those spear points, but we also had direct dates. And that was done by the archaeologists working for the Army Reserve Center.
That's interesting.
I have, I have other questions. I don't want to hog the show.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, Norm. Is everyone done with the survey? Because I can't really see who might be trying to speak here. Is everyone okay with the survey? Can we take that away?
Yeah, sure. Yes.
Okay. Take it away, Scott. And then if Dick Thomas or either of the folks here from Velcro have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do have a question for Scott. Hi, Scott. Andy McVane.
How you doing, Andy?
Good, how are you? You had mentioned earlier there were four pre-contact sites and the Adams Farmhouse. The site with the buffer you were just showing, I mean, I only saw one site on that map. Which of those sites was that one of the pre-contact sites?
Yes, that was one of the pre-contact. There were two in that field, based on the landform. And then, actually, the historic site was there as well, just a little bit north of where Locust 4 was identified. The other, other site is, you know, the other site was in Army Reserve area, and then there's one site, as I said, on, on Track 4 or Lot 4, that was not evaluated.
And when you said that only one of them was archaeologically significant for the National Register, does that mean that the other sites that you're mentioning now are not eligible and they're no longer sites, or are they?
Well, there's still sites that are protected, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so the only protection on Track 1 is in that circular area that was, or oval area that was shown on that survey plot.
And, and Dick, is it just Track 1 that you've put on, that's on the market, or is it both tracks?
Both tracks, both tracks are on the market.
So the other track has what, Scott? Would there be any?
Well, so the other track would need to have further review if something is proposed that is jurisdictional, under some state regulation, like Act 250 or the Public Service Board, Utility Commission, sorry. So essentially, anything that would be proposed there would need to be reviewed as part of that permitting, and we would look at that area. As I said, there is one known site. The extent of that is, is unknown, not, it was not subject to any kind of evaluation. So it's not known if it's significant or not. So there would most likely need to be some additional work done, depending on what was cited there. But it would depend entirely on the characteristics of what is cited there. And that's a restriction that's under, under Act 250, essentially.
And where would that be in that site?
I believe the permit, because nothing was evaluated in, in Track 4, covers, basically says, any development in Track 4 would need to be reviewed. There's, it's a little bit different from Track 1 in that it hasn't progressed to the point where we know that there's a significant site area there that needs to be preserved in place. If it's subject to regulation, like is occurring on Lot 1, it would just need to be reviewed, like any other development would need to be reviewed in Vermont that's subject to Act 250, or, like I said, PUC regulatory review.
When, when you mention additional work to be done or reviewed, does that mean some archaeological study has to be done? Or is that, is that the extreme of what may happen, or is there something smaller, less work than that that could be done?
So the level of archaeological information on Lot 4 is somewhat unknown at this point. Like I said, there is one site that was kind of on the edge of the Army Reserve Center that was defined during that work. So it really would depend on what, what was proposed. Generally, the way it happens is that someone from my office, as part of my project review team, when something is proposed, would conduct an initial site visit to look at the site plan of what's proposed and make a determination as to whether or not any additional work would happen. And maybe recommend, you know, slight change in the site plan to avoid sensitive areas or so forth. But it could very well mean if, if a larger type development is proposed for that lot, they would need to do some additional archaeological work to either evaluate known site that's there, or any other site that might be discovered by additional, what we call Phase 1 site identification work during that parcel.
Oh, Barbara, you're muted.
Thank you. Scott, back on 4. If there was some development, some infill development proposed again, right along Route 7 there.
On Track 1, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Locust 4.
Yep.
Yep. What would be your, I mean, what could be done along that strip if they wanted to, you know, buy the parcel or the two parcels, but do some retail or something along Route 7?
Well, you know, as I said, I mean, without any additional work, no ground disturbance could happen in that buffer zone. But as I mentioned before, Key Collision had essentially done a site design, which included a rather large building and infrastructure, store water and other things on the parcel with, without impacting that area in the southwest corner of the property. So certainly, things are possible above and beyond putting a solar array or something that would cover, you know, more of the overall parcel, but would probably less disturbance. If I remember correctly, the key is, Collision application did call for a fair amount of grading to level out the area, as you would imagine for a car, car-related activity, you know, with the parking lot and things like that. But they were able to, like I said, they were able to design it so they could avoid that area.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, Dick Thomas, or either of the Velcro, Velcro people?
I, I don't have any questions. I, I've studied this in the past, and it's pretty much in line with what I already know.
Yeah, I think I'm all set from Velcro's perspective. I don't know if Sandy had anything, but it, the information.
Okay. Norm, did you, you? Um, Norm, did you, you had some?
I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's relevant, Barbara. I'll just talk to you about it separately, I think. I don't want to waste any time.
Okay. Um, any other commissioners have anything? Um, I I've got a question for Dick Thomas and and and, um, and Scott, is is there anything the the Town Planning Commission can do to, to avoid, you know, some of the the two situations we've had in the last three or four years where projects get dropped?
Uh, time around, um, you know, again, I have no idea why Key Collision withdrew, but I don't think it was because of the archaeology. Um, because as I said, we had worked around everything. Um, I did have initial conversations and offered, um, to talk with the solar developer um, that was working with, uh, the Thomases, um, as to, um, what kind of options would be potentially available in in that buffer area for for citing a solar array, which, as I said, has less impact than most kinds of of things, but nobody ever followed up with me on that. So I guess, leading to your question, Barbara, I would say the one thing that the planning commission could do is to potentially assist the Thomases if somebody comes and and encourage them, you know, to talk to my office, um, you know, directly and rather than going through intermediates and maybe not getting the full spectrum of information about what might be possible in the buffer zone. I mean, that particular lot, as I said, you know, certainly more than seventy-five percent of it is available for development right now with no archaeological restrictions at all. So.
Okay. Dick, do you want that sort of assistance from us?
Why? Yes, I, I'd love it. And I can't, I can't see any reason why I wouldn't want it. I think the, uh, uh, previous developer here that just pulled out uh, found that the, uh, the wetland buffer, wetland with the fifty-foot buffer all around it cutting its size of his site down, so he couldn't put the size solar in there that he needed to. It was going to have the same expense for a smaller solar array, and it just didn't, wasn't feasible for him. But I think he was hurt more by the, uh, by the wetland and the fifty-foot buffer that they require all the way around it now.
And the wetland is up in the the northwest corner, that wetland? Or is there another one in there?
There's a wetland, there's a wetland that comes, uh, between the, between the reserve and and the area where we're looking at on Route Seven, comes right down through all the way from from the south boundary all the way down to, uh, Holstro. And, uh, not, not perfectly shaped by any means, but was taking away enough property so that they weren't going to have room to put the size solar in that they needed to for the cost they were going to have to lay out.
Well, we can, we we certainly encourage, uh, developers to come to, um, to the planning commission first and 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 hopefully the select board as well. And, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not a requirement of developers. Uh, we just try to get the word out that we would, yeah, like to hear about the projects and offer any assistance like this. So we'll be glad to do that in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything else? Well, thank you, everyone, um, everyone joining the call. And Scott, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
For speaking to us. And and so you are, you are the person we should direct projects, developers to.
Yes, I'm, I'm the coordinator of the project review team. And, um, you know, we have a project intake, um, on our, on our webpage, you know, with a project cover form or whatever, but, you know, all our information is listed. People can call me up. Um, you know, contact me by email. And, you know, that's a big part of our job is, uh, um, assisting potential projects, um, through this aspect of the review, so. I lost you guys. I think I lost, I mean, I like, my internet kicked out a little there, I think.
Yeah, I, yeah. The audio got a little messed up, and I think we got all the words.
Okay, well, that's good. Yes, certainly encourage anybody to give us a call. We look at any projects.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
So, yes, yep. Have a good evening. Uh, everyone's welcome to stay with us or continue your evening doing something, something else. Okay. Any other, um, does the commission want to finish that off anyway, or should we just move on?
That was a good update. I don't think there's anything further to say.
Yeah, okay. So, um, the next thing I see on the agenda is the upcoming budget, uh, town budget. Uh, Bill, do you have that spreadsheet I sent you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, um, there was the initial budget drafting meeting earlier this week. Um, and what I proposed is over there on, on, you know, the furthest column to the right in the blue. So if the budget, the total budget went from ten thousand two fifty, and this is still in draft form. There's still a few more meetings to go before this is a finalized budget. Uh, so it went from ten to fifty. I, I deducted two hundred and fifty dollars there out of the miscellaneous line item. So it's an even ten thousand dollars now for us. Um, in column G, there is the amount of money we've spent so far this year since July first. So we're not, we're still not big spenders. We never are.
We did, we did, we have a, we have one invoice has yet to come in for the, actually, for the, um, newspaper publishing for the subdivision came out of advertising, but that's the only other one that's not on here yet.
Yeah, and then a couple for the webinar.
Yes.
You know, like eighty dollars there. And the advertising was probably, what, about a hundred or two hundred?
Uh, it was a fairly lengthy one. It was more than that. So
Okay.
It had a lot, we had a lot of the exemptions in there, so we had to list them all. So that made it longer, which made it more expensive. It was, uh, four hundred and forty-five dollars.
Yeah, and there's, and Andres, we still don't have the fifteen hundred. We haven't paid him for the interactive thing, which isn't done yet.
Right.
He's been so busy, he hasn't finished that up for us. Um, so this is what the budget looks, looks like right now. Uh, some, some departments are reducing, um, some are not, like the police department's going to be larger. Um, highway department's good, is re, is reduced a little bit. So unless there's any questions there, uh, I needed to go ahead and give them some numbers. They were, they liked it really getting a good early start, the select board does. Excuse me.
So I, I had a question. Fifteen hundred dollars for the interactive tool, where would that be charged?
Well, that was going to, um, I was going to take it from several different line, line items here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I was, I thought it was going to be consulting. That's why I asked.
Right, which is that last one. That's consulting, but that's, you know, that's the one with the least amount of money. So we'll take some out of miscellaneous. We'll probably take some out of the planning commission. The planning commission is, um, what you folks, um, get paid. The regional commission, the only thing in there is the annual dues. It also would go to the person representing the town at the regional commission. Um, but they haven't put in for any compensation. Okay. Any other questions, Jim? Do you have a question?
No, it looks good to me.
Okay. Okay, um, let's move, move on to old business.
Um, Would you get an update? Excuse me, this is Norman.
Yeah.
Um, I had, so first, I've seen this, of course, um, and I don't know where total we're at now. It looks like probably a little over half.
Um, no.
Hmm?
Uh, what we've spent so far?
Yep.
We spent, uh, one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars out of a two, a ten thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget.
Well, it says expenditures, oh, that's nineteen twenty.
Yeah.
And in?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple budget years for comparison. And then column F is our current budget. Column G is what we spent to date.
Oh, okay.
And H is what I proposed. You know, it's, it's essentially level funding.
Yeah.
Minus two hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, so we have enough money. I mean, we, we've spent thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen fifty out of ten thousand two fifty.
Right.
All right, so we won't have any trouble paying Andre uh, paying the consulting fee.
No.
Okay, I didn't. Now I see what it is. Thank you.
So Barbara?
Yeah.
It's Dana. Um, generally speaking, for, um, allocations from a budget, uh, just for historical, uh, purposes, we, we usually don't, I usually don't split lines. I assign it all to one line. And then, uh, I do a reserve in other lines and just say that we're not going to expend that. So, for example, it sounds like Andres is really a consulting fee. And so I would recommend that we charge it all against the consulting line. And then just say that we're going to reserve X amount in miscellaneous and X amount uh, in, uh, another line, whether that's planning commission or something else.
Yeah, yeah, that's always.
That way, we know year to year how much we're spending on those particular things without having to go back to the, uh, to the clerk and ask for a reckoning of the, uh, invoices.
Okay, yeah, that is a good way to keep track of that. You know, the, the, um, online mapping uh, is probably a one-time expense, you know, for us. We're, we're not going to be doing that very often. And I'm not sure how the town clerk wants to handle this. Um, so that might be a consideration too, but that's, you've made some very good points.
So Barbara, I'll let, I'll tell you that we, we ran into that with some other departments that were trying to do the same thing, like, oh, I've got a bigger expense, I'm going to spread it out. And what they were finding is they weren't getting a true read on their expenses year over year because they were spreading out the expenses. So they said, even if you deficit spend a line item, you understand the true expense and can budget more appropriately for the future.
Okay, which is what Dana's saying.
Exactly. So if it's under consulting, it goes under consulting. And if it goes in deficit, that's where it is. But we can, we, you know, it's, we understand this is a one-time expense, so the next budget year, you don't have to change it. Or you say this and then we're going to be repeating, so you would have to change it. But it gives a more accurate representation of what we're actually doing.
Okay, good.
And then we just make a note that we're taking the extra amount either out of miscellaneous or another line to be able to make up for that fifteen hundred or whatever it is.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if we ever get that bill. We ever get that map.
Yeah, we haven't gotten the bill yet.
We haven't got the map. Okay.
Is it okay if we change those two lines and remove zoning since we don't do that?
There was, I know that conversation is had every couple of years, and there's some reason why it, the zoning needs to stay in there. I, for the life of me, I can't remember the reasoning.
Okay.
Um, but, but we, let, let's, let's ask Carrie about it. If you want to go ahead, Bill, and ask her about that, um, she, she wouldn't know the history, but
Right.
I don't know.
It is peculiar, it is peculiar.
Yeah, yeah.
When this comes up again, probably on Tuesday, we can, we can bring it up.
Yeah. Yes.
This is Jim speaking. Um, I have a feeling, having served on the floodplain, um, committee years ago, that it has to do with the floodplain zoning, uh, requirement that's in effect, uh, and alive and well in Rowland Town.
I think you're right, Jim. I think that is it.
Um, it's very necessary that, um, the floodplain ordinance remain in effect because there's a lot of people that, uh, would be deprived of insurance if that fell through the cracks.
Okay.
Is that what the two hundred dollars is for?
Um, I don't know. The, the expenditures last year?
Yes. In that line.
Yeah, I don't know. That, I, I think that was consultant fees last year. I can't remember what exactly that was.
You know, it's, it's even, this is Norman, i- it's even more curious because zoning is in two lines. I understand exactly what, uh, Jim is saying. I was not aware that the floodplain ordinance was considered zoning or labeled zoning, but, um, so the
it, it's, the, I believe the federal government, um, at the time I was, uh, working directly with it, um, it called it an ordinance. But in fact, it was, it was, uh, determined to be zoning, um, issues uh, by the state and, uh, the people in Montpelier that were um, overseeing such things for the municipality. So it was, um, and is, like I said before, if, uh, if this isn't, um, spelled out just about so, the feds could determine that our floodplain zoning and budgeting for that, uh, might be called into question. And I believe the decision was made even before I served on that uh, to list it like you see it here.
It's not, it's not an operational problem. It's just a point of curiosity, given the history of zoning in town. I don't think we need to spend any more time on it.
So Bill's going to follow up on it, isn't he? And we'll we'll, we'll hear what the answer is.
Yeah, yeah, we'll run it by the select board um, next, next week. And and Norm, they do like to see the separate line items for advertising for like public hearings and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and and separate that from consulting fees.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Just clarifies.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, down to Harbor Freight, there is a bit of a, I, as of um, almost two weeks ago, um, there was a snafu. almost two weeks ago, um, there was a snafu with the, with this, the, um, developers wanting to build a store. Because Act 250 was, was requesting a sidewalk from Aldis back to the store. And the developers were blocking, um, due to the expense of the construction and liability insurance um, that would be incurred with that. So, um, and Bill, uh, Phil, backfill me as, as you can. It was decided at, um, a select board meeting a couple of weeks ago that they would propose to the developer that if the developer put in the sidewalk, the town would take over the, the street and the sidewalk and, and, and by doing that would take the liability away from the developer.
Yeah, yeah, more or less. They, they off, they offered to notify the developer that the town would intend to take over, if it would help, the town would intend to take over that section of road, thereby giving the town right-of-way access over the sidewalk, thereby assuming the liability, which Aldis was wanting a fair amount of money for. So the town made the offer to take over the road to, to remove the liability from Aldis and allow it to go through. And, uh, through different, I guess, communication and help, um, last Friday, Act 250 just granted the permit. So they waived the sidewalk, approved the permit, and they are now working on it. So it's a, it's a, been, been a long time coming. I don't know if they're gonna start construction this, this season or if they're gonna wait till spring now, but, um, yeah, they received their approval on the 13th and they're very happy.
And they waived the sidewalk altogether?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness. Okay.
Yeah, a sidewalk, I tell you. That, that side, a sidewalk requirement was one of the factors of that collision center not being put in also. They're, they were requiring a sidewalk to go to it. And that's what, one of the reasons, one of the things that killed the project.
And along Route seven, right?
Right. They want a sidewalk along Route seven, and it was a substantial distance to sidewalk because it was on the east side of the road. So.
Sidewalks to nowhere.
Sidewalks to nowhere. Yep. Yeah.
Okay. Well, good. Okay. So we'll have a Harbor Freight store.
We will. I'll, uh, probably by late spring, early summer next year.
Great, great.
In the paper, I think in the Rowland Herald today, I saw where, where Josh had written something and they're gonna hold off and wait until March to start construction.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think they are. I think it's just too late to get started at this point and the, the construction costs of, of starting now and working over the winter were prohibitive and it was just more beneficial to, and, you know, hopefully they'll, they'll, they'll stick around, but, um, yeah, I think it just made more sense for them to wait and start in the spring. So, yep.
Okay. And, um, there's an update in the Blueberry Lane extension. The select board, yeah, spent a couple of meetings talking about this. And at the last one, it was decided to, um, name that extension that goes from the end of Blueberry Lane up to the new development in Pittsburgh. Uh, the new name will be Blueberry Lane Extension and then PVT for private. So I, uh, that is going back to Pittsburgh now to see what they, they think of it, right, Howard? Are you, you still on that case?
Pittsburgh has approved of it.
Oh, good.
It's all set to go. Yep.
Is it gonna be a larger, a longer sign because? Lots of work.
Yeah, I know, sure.
Lots of letters have been on there. Okay. Any questions on, on those? And, and Bill, the next one, um, the select board's been talking about some redesign of, of, of Northwood Park. Uh, I, I'm, I guess I wasn't in on some of the meetings where where what, you know, I have no idea what this is, what, what part of the park and what ideas they're looking for. Do you?
They've talked about expanding the trails, but there's been no real discussion about redesigning the park. Nothing that, nothing I can think of.
Okay, they've got, they've got, um, they have some engineering help? Is that right?
Oh, that's the, the, um, uh, yeah, the, the, the sidewalk, the, to, they've got the easement to go down to Susanna Drive. So this is to engineer the multi, uh, the, the, the multi-use path to, to come down out of Northwood Park onto Susanna Drive.
Okay.
Yes. So that's, that's the next step of that progress and then working to make the connection that like a sidewalk from the school to, to there. So that way the, the kids that go to Northwood Park can go on a sidewalk the, the whole way up to Northwood Park rather than walking along the edge of the road. So that, that's the, the Northwood Park, uh, yeah, the, the shared use path is what it is. Yeah.
So what's been budgeted? Just the design of?
Yeah, it's 15,000, I think is what Byron had for engineering and design of the path. But it's been a long time to, just to get the easement that we needed. So, uh, but that, that is secured. And we did that, uh, last year. So now it's gonna be, uh, engineering that path, uh, that section of path. So in terms of, you know, everything, the, the material and the fencing and all, all that stuff has gotta be decided. And then, uh, I think they're gonna look for construction next year. Or the year, the year after this. Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have anything else to bring to the group? Okay, the last thing would be the minutes from the last meeting, October 29th. Take it away, Norm.
Is this my assigned task?
Move to approve then.
Okay, Dana's moving to approve it. Do we have a second?
There, I think there is one. It just came to my, as I looked at it. In point eight H on the first page, right at the bottom, is the, it's, it should be T R E S S if requested?
Uh, trees.
It should be trees.
Yeah.
I'll second, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just check and see. I didn't say anything else. I missed that the first time.
A move to approve as corrected.
Okay with that, Chairman? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so let's see. When's our next meeting? We've got one before the the December 9th? Is that right? Yeah.
10th.
10th, yeah.
10.
I assume we will be meeting on the 31st, however.
That's a pretty good assumption.
Since we can't go anywhere, maybe it's a good idea.
If we had something to do, but, um,
The highlight of the holidays.
Yeah. Well, we could just all have a toast, you know? Or d'urfs and.
Okay, we'll, we'll take it under consideration, Norm.
I'm sure. Put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, right.
The only reason I mention that, Barbara, is because, uh, if we don't meet on the 31st, will we be, uh, resuming our three-week schedule uh, after that? Or will we be meeting first week in January? That's the only reason I ask.
Yeah.
We should probably decide our schedule at the next meeting for next year. So that we get those, that three-word rotation.
That's a good idea. Let's do that next meeting. So we do have an agenda item next week, next time.
Right, just at the, uh, PC schedule for the year.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't want us to have to meet for nothing, you know?
We've never done that.
No, we haven't, Barbara. No, we haven't. Not since you've been chair.
Well, yeah, for better or worse. Okay, anything else?
Um, just out of curiosity, we will have, by the time we meet the next time, will we have a determination on the grant that went through or not quite?
We should. Um, there's no guarantee, but we should.
Sounds good.
For, for the, yeah, the falls, the
Yes.
Me and Falls, Center Rowland Falls, yeah.
I couldn't, I knew it was in December, I couldn't, couldn't remember the date that they were supposed to notify people.
Yeah.
All right.
Barbara, I, I have several pages for you to sign for this subdivision. So when you have the opportunity, you should stop over and need you to autograph. I got four different, four different documents for you to sign.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll take one.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone.